Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 29, 2011 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Draymond.
Here.
Councilmembers Draymond, Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Draymond, would you lead us in the flag salute?
I will. Would you all please stand? Would please place your right hand over your heart and join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. President Lyndon James Johnson remarked that, quote, "The vote is the most powerful instrument ever devised by man for breaking down injustice and destroying the terrible walls which imprison men because they are different from other men," end quote. Let us not allow these words to ring hollow or the tens of thousands of women, citizens of African-American or Hispanic descent, and others who had to fight hard for suffrage to have struggled in vain. Let us pray, let us pay our tribute to their sacrifice by engaging our neighbors and friends for the upcoming elections next Tuesday. Let us pray that we and our neighbors and our friends will cast their votes wisely. We pray for the men and women of our armed forces as well, who are still serving in combat, and for their safe return. May their missions end soon and usher in a long peace. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the March 29, 2011 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, March 24, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. The next item, please.
Next item is presentations and appointments. And at 3A is agenda preview for the meetings of April 5, 2011.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, April 5, 2011, which is Election Day, we have no Housing Authority or Redevelopment Agency business agenda items. We do at 2:30 have a Glendale City Council and a Glendale Housing Authority meeting. This is a joint meeting. And this is Director of Community Services and Parks. This is regarding the status of path achieved Glendale and HS and Compassion Center Permanent Support of Housing for Chronically Homeless. And this is a project. For the Glendale City Council meeting that evening at 6:00 PM, we do have a short agenda. We have one item under consent, and this is General Manager of GWP regarding the purchase of OSI Soft PI Process Historian System Software for Electrical Distribution Automation Project. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Previous is a proclamation designating April 2011 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and April 27, 2011 as Denim Day in Glendale.
Thank you. Will the members of the Commission on the Status of Women please come forward? Chairperson Paula Devine.
Vice Chair Vache Tashjin. And Commissioner Susan Hunt.
Christine Baboumi and our staff administrators here as well.
I have a proclamation, and it reads as follows. Whereas the United States government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women, in collaboration with Peace Over Violence, has declared April 27, 2011 as Denim Day in Los Angeles County. Whereas every two minutes, someone in America is sexually assaulted, approximately one in six women are raped during their lifetime, and youths under 18 years of age account for approximately 44 percent of all reported rapes. And whereas with proper education, there's compelling evidence that we can successfully reduce the incidence of this physically and psychologically damaging crime. And whereas both Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault are serious issues in our society, and whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and forcible rape, allowing these crimes to persist and victim survivors to be revictimized. And whereas the members of the...
Please, Mr. Mohill.
As I was saying, whereas the members of the Glendale City Council strongly support the efforts of the City of Glendale Commission on the Status of Women, in collaboration with Peace Over Violence, to educate people in our community about the true impact of rape and sexual assault and what can be done to prevent it, I, R. Najarian, Mayor of the City of Glendale hereby proclaim the month of April 2011 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and designate April 27, 2011 as Denim Day in Glendale, and urge everyone to wear jeans on April 27 to spread the message that there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Najarian, City Council, and staff. On behalf of the Commission on the Status of Women and those of us that are here, Mr. Tashjin and Susan Hunt, we'd like to thank you for this proclamation. We know the statistics you just told us. One in six women will be assaulted in their lifetime. Every two minutes in the United States, someone is assaulted. The goal of the Commission on the Status of Women is to raise awareness of sexual assault and to educate women by offering practical ways and simple everyday actions that anyone can take to help prevent and eliminate sexual assault in the City of Glendale. We begin our month of programs on April 7 with our first free self-defense class, which will be given at the Police Department at 6:00 PM to 8:30. On April 21, we will move the free self-defense class to Glendale Community College. Our ex-officio is a college student at Glendale Community College, and she suggested that we have one there for college students. And when you think about the statistic, college women are four times more likely to experience sexual assault than any other portion of our population. You know that, you can see why we want to cast a wider net and expose the Glendale College community to these self-defense classes. They will be given by Nelson Neo, who is with S.H.I.E.L.D. Self-Defense. Their goal is to empower women to eradicate sexual assault and to even up the playing field. After those free self-defense classes, and I have to say that you must have reservations, we already have 30, over 30, for the first one, and 20 for the second. So please, if you're interested, you'll have to make a reservation. On April 27, we will then observe Denim Day, which we do in collaboration with Peace Over Violence. And I'm proud to say that the Commission, through the years that we've been observing Denim Day, we have contributed over $5,000 to Peace Over Violence for support programs for women who have experienced sexual assault. Susan B. Anthony said, "Women should not depend on men to protect them. We should learn to defend ourselves." The Commission on the Status of Women is providing women and young girls an opportunity to do just that. So please, I hope that all the women and young girls in the community will take advantage of these self-defense classes. Come to the march on April 28. We begin at the YWCA at 6:00 PM. This is the Take Back the Night march. We will march down to Perkins Plaza here at City Hall, and we hope to have an inspirational speaker there, and then march back to the Y for the clothesline project. So I hope that women, young girls, and men will take advantage of all of the programs that we offer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we have... Where we go to the next item? Okay. Next item, please.
Next item at 3C is Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation.
Thank you. I got a very interesting letter the other day, and it was from the Weyland Foundation regarding water conservation. And I'd like you all to know that I accepted the Weyland Foundation's Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. The Weyland Foundation is associated with the environmental artist Weyland, who does those great sea waterscapes and underwater scenes with whales and all that. He has started a Mayor's Challenge to conserve water with a number of cities across Southern California. This is only a friendly competition, starting April 1 and running through April 30. And it involves you, our residents, taking this challenge by going online at www.mywaterpledge.com to take the pledge and help conserve water and recognizing the importance of the need to preserve this precious resource. I encourage you all to go online, to sign this pledge, and help conserve water and make cleaner choices at home that will benefit our community and the environment. Since this is a friendly competition, and the goal is for the greatest participation, the residents of the city with the most pledges will win hundreds of tickets to the Los Angeles Angels, Disneyland, and the Aquarium of the Pacific. I encourage all residents to sign the pledge today, demonstrating our commitment to conserve water and showing the other communities that Glendale cares about our natural resources and that we are a winning city. All you do is get on the website, click that you're going to accept the pledge. Very simple, very easy. No one's going to come in and actually monitor your water use. You're all in the honor system, and we know that we're full of honorable people here in Glendale. And the more residents that sign up and register, the best chance we have of winning these great prizes, tickets to the aquarium, the angels, as well as Disneyland. So www.mywaterpledge.com.
And if we win those tickets, are you the one that's going to be the designated redeemer?
They are so smart, those people at the Weyland Foundation. They know better than to put tickets in politicians' hands, especially the mayor's hands. So they will be involved directly with the distribution, depending on the people that... Obviously, everyone cannot get a ticket to Disneyland, but from the winning city, all the applicants will be selected at random, and you will receive either the game tickets, the Disneyland tickets, or the aquarium passes. They're very smart. Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Ms. Friedman.
Thank you. Wanted to just talk briefly about two events I attended on the weekend, on Saturday. The first was Hoops for Heroes, which was a wonderful event put together by our service clubs, our police department, and our fire department. It was a lot of fun. The police and the fire played basketball. And I'll tell you, if you think that these guys weren't serious and weren't on what I would call kind of a semi-professional sort of level, they were pretty amazing. And we had a great crowd, and it was all to raise money for the Salvation Army's programs for disadvantaged youth. And it was very successful. I hope that we do many more of them. And I want to thank all of the participants, all of the service clubs, all of our fine officers who participated. It was truly a lot of fun and a great cause. And secondly, with many of my colleagues, I think all of my colleagues, I attended the recognition event for Cesar Chavez. Our Congressman Adam Schiff was in attendance, as was our Assemblyman Mike Gatto. We had several hundred people from the community, and it was a really great event. People came out with their kids. People performed all day, mostly schoolchildren. And we got a lot of talks about workers' rights and about the civil rights movement. And it was a wonderful event, and our mayor was the moderator throughout the day, introducing...
MC.
He was the MC.
Introducing the acts.
And then if you'll indulge me, I have a very special guest I would like to introduce. I feel very blessed to be able to introduce this person to the community today, and I'm so happy that she's here. This is her first time visiting council chambers, although she's been to Glendale. You want to help her up? So ladies and gentlemen of Glendale, I would like to introduce to you one of my favorite people in the world and someone who influenced me probably more than anyone else, my grandmother, Belle Osmond, who's taking a little bit of her time to come up, which you will understand when you hear her age. She's 98 years young. And as you can see, still kicking and here to show everybody how good 98 can be. So you want to say hello to the people of Glendale, Grandma?
I am absolutely delighted to be here. And I'm so happy, so happy that of all my hopes, my granddaughter, all my life, I knew that she would be great. And she is, and she is the greatest person.
Thanks, Grandma. There you have an unbiased assessment of my personality. But she's known me for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Draymond.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, a couple of things. Ms. Friedman also has already mentioned the Cesar Chavez event. It was a terrific event. There were a little more than 200 people showed up on a blustery, rather chilly day, actually. The event, part of the event was moved indoors, didn't damper, put a damper on anybody's ability to enjoy the event, have fun, and eat some terrific food, and to acknowledge Cesar Chavez. It was nice to see all of our colleagues there. Something else I wanted to mention was something close to your heart, Mr. Mayor, the 710 extension and the scoping meeting that has been scheduled, unfortunately, for election night. Pretty interesting that the proponents of this extension couldn't find any other night, apparently, to hold a community meeting on this subject in La Crescenta area other than election night. Pretty cynical, pretty unbelievable, yet there you have it. And this has been kind of the typical routine. And so I'll take this opportunity while I'm on it to again join Mayor Najarian in vocally opposing that extension. Lastly, I wanted to mention, I've sort of put it off for a few weeks because of other issues that have come up at the council meeting, but I wanted to ask that we adjourn the meeting in memory of Ivan Cole, who passed away at the end of February at the age of 91. And Ivan spent 30 years as the groundskeeper of Rockhaven Sanitarium, and many of you remember him because he was here at the council meetings a few times to advocate for the purchase of Rockhaven as for the city to use the future home of the Montrose Branch Library. Ivan was born in Wales and spent World War II as a sailor in the Royal Navy. He served on a minesweeper in the English Channel and had the distinction of having helped both in the evacuation at Dunkirk and the invasion of Normandy. He immigrated to the United States and because of his deep love for plants and trees, attended college for horticulture. And after working for a very large nursery, Burkhardt's Nursery, which is also a very famous nursery, he joined the staff at Rockhaven Sanitarium in Montrose. Ivan felt a special connection to the lush gardens in the three-and-a-half-acre campus and soon had the landscaping in tip-top condition, even winning prestigious awards for its beauty. He was truly proud of his work that he did there and shared his passion for growing things with all the patients that resided at Rockhaven over the many years. After his retirement, when the abandoned sanitarium was for sale, Ivan was instrumental in convincing the City of Glendale to purchase the property and to preserve it as a community center and library. He forged a strong friendship, as it turned out, with former city manager, Assistant City Manager Bob McFall, and they began to share this common interest in Rockhaven and in the photography of the place and the landscaping of the place. And those who know Mr. McFall know not only does he have a background and degree in, I believe, horticulture, but also a great interest in Rockhaven for that reason. He was also featured in the documentary Exploring Historic Rockhaven, produced by GTV6, and you may have seen some of the, some of you may have seen it when it aired on GTV6. There's a picture of Ivan right there as a much younger fellow. And Ivan is survived by his wife, Roberta, and she still lives in their home overlooking Big Tonga Canyon. Services for Ivan's memorial are at Crippen Mortuary. I believe it's at 2 o'clock on April 2. So if you care to attend, it should be a very nice memorial to a very nice, decent, and good man, Ivan Cole. We'll miss him. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Weaver.
Just one thing. I know Mr. Kosakian will speak to it, too. On the election, don't anybody try to apply for an absentee ballot. The deadline was today. But if you do have a vote-by-mail in your hand absentee ballot, you can turn it in at your, anytime at, you can correct me, Mr. Kosakian, if I'm wrong, you can turn it on election night at your precinct or any other precinct headquarters. You can bring it to City Hall, I mean, to Election Center in the Police Building any day from now through the election up till 8 o'clock at night. Let's see, yeah. I guess those are the main places you can do it. And if you, for some reason, have a good reason for not being able to get your absentee ballot, if that's what you want to do, you can talk to Election Center about getting an emergency absentee ballot application and voting on the night of the election. Further information, you should call 548-4000. Correct, Mr. Kosakian? Just want people to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
I missed last week's meeting because I had the good fortune to compete and receive a fellowship for a transportation conference. They brought in reps from Western Europe, South America, Canada, the U.S., and I believe Asia. And it was basically coordinating bikes, buses, and trains. It was a super helpful, I think, experience, which I will be turning to our traffic engineer who's in the audience, and plenty of ideas and lots of information to pass on to the staff and to the council.
Thank you. Mr. Draymond, in addition to adjourning the meeting in memory of Mr. Cole, I would also request that we adjourn the meeting in the memory of Jane Friend. Jane was an arts activist and former president of the Associates of Brand Library and Art Center. She passed away on March 18 of this year. She was 93 years old. She was involved with the Associates of Brand Library since the group's inception in the late 1960s. She was the originator of the Brand National Art Exhibition, an annual juried show at the Brand Library and Art Center that, to this day, is the only one of its kind in Glendale. This exhibition has, over the years, grown in size and prestige and is now one of the most popular national juried art shows in the United States. For many of the Brand Nationals' 39 consecutive years, Jane organized and supervised the exhibition and retained the services of nationally prominent jurors. She attended the Art Center College of Design in Pasadena, where she taught watercolor and monotype, also at the Burbank Creative Arts Center, for over 30 years. She was born in Pasadena and grew up there. She had spent the last 47 years, however, of her life in Glendale. Here's a quote from one of her friends, Bonise Collins Turner, and she says, "Jane was also a wonderful guide to the Southern California area. She knew and loved its landmarks and had known many of its prominent longtime residents, including Zane Gray's son, and she always happily shared her stories." The Associates of Brand Library and Art Center have renamed the Purchase Award bestowed on an outstanding artwork at the annual Brand National Exhibition through the Jane Friend Purchase Award to honor her memory and contributions to the organization. Jane is survived by her four children, Marie, Nancy, Sally, and John, as well as six grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. Glendale has lost a generous and involved supporter of its artistic and cultural life. We talked about the 710 scoping. By the way, those of you who are available on election night, if you're not glued to your sets or at one of the campaign night receptions, it will be held in the La Cañada High School cafeteria. And I believe it's at 6 o'clock where it begins. Several weeks ago, we talked about a freeway sign, well, the big billboards that were posted on Mount Carmel, visible to everyone driving on the freeways, and how first they were just obnoxious with the realtors advertisement, and then it got rather ugly with graffiti and nasty things like that. And I did have a discussion with L.A. City Councilman Jose Huizar, and he was aware of the problem. And he said, "Well, if Glendale wants it down, we already have the police enforcement up there, code enforcement, but if you want it down, I'll just send some of my boys up there and tear it down." And I said, "No, we don't want to do that. Let's go through the appropriate channels." My hunch was that it bothers the folks of Eagle Rock as much as it bothers us, and he was looking for any excuse just to send his strike team up there to pull it down. But I said, "No, no, let's, you know, they are processing it through the proper legal channels." So the good news is that shortly, the disfiguring billboards there will be taken down.
Comments from Mr. Kosakian?
It was mentioned, I alluded to it in this evening's invocation, and Councilmember Weaver also spoke to it, that the election is next Tuesday, April 5, 2011. Polls open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM in the evening. Want to show residents, today was actually there, we have up on screen information on the elections. This has been running throughout this month on GTV6, reminding people to vote. But I also want to do a really quick demonstration because today was the last day for people to request an absentee ballot to be able to vote from home, except for, per the Elections Code, in extreme circumstances due to health reasons or unforeseen issues. I do want to show, let's get projector to work. There we go. This is our elections website, glandalevotes.org. For people who want to know where their polling location is, they may have misplaced their sample ballot book, which has that information, or may have thrown it away. They can log onto glandalevotes.org. On the top bar menu here, we have a number of buttons. They can either click on Precinct Map or scroll down to find your polling place. By clicking on that, they will be taken to a map of Glendale, and in the box above, if they type in their address of residence for this demonstration, I'll use 613 East Broadway. Sometimes it feels like I live here. Click on the address, and a pushpin will appear. This is City Hall right there on the boundary, and if they click on, they can zoom in as well. But if they click on the green bubble, it'll tell them where the polling location is for those who do live at City Hall. The polling location is the Board of Education, Room 103, 223 North Jackson Street. And that is a service available now that everyone can use from the convenience of their home. Or if they do not have access to the Internet or to this website, they can call us at 818-548-4000, and we will happily direct them to their proper polling location for Election Day. And we encourage everyone to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from staff? Let's move on to the next item.
Item 5 is Consent Items, including minutes. The following routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. No cards were submitted.
Mr. Weaver.
Will the consent calendar at 5?
Your second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item?
Item 6 is Oral Communications. This portion of the oral communications is reserved for a three-minute announcement period.
Thank you. This is for the general public announcements. However, I did receive a request for priority by Sharon Ragavachary. Did I pronounce that right? Please come forward. Can you, can you make your announcement in three minutes or your statement in three minutes?
I'll try to make as brief as possible. I thank you because I do have a measure-S panel discussion that I put together, and I need to be there. So I do appreciate that you let me go ahead. Good evening, Mayor Najarian and Council. My name is Sharon Ragavachary. We'll work it out. I was on the Crescent Valley Town Council for seven years. I'm currently on the Steering Committee for the Crescent Valley Community Association. And I also... Can you, can you make your announcement in three minutes? Or your statement in three minutes?
I'll try to make as brief as possible. I thank you, because I do have a measure S panel discussion that I put together, and I need to be there. So I do appreciate that you let me go ahead. Good evening, Mayor Najarian and Council. My name is Sharon Ragavachary. We'll work it out. I was on the Crescent Valley Town Council for seven years. I'm currently on the steering committee for the Crescent Valley Community Association. And I also write a column, some of you may know that I write a column weekly for the Glendale News Press. And that's what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. Unfortunately, last week, at our community association's Glendale School Board Candidate Forum, I spoke with Dan Evans, the editor, my editor, for the news press. And he asked me, he was asking about a woman across the room, and said that he, that it was apparent that he, she didn't like him. And I said, "Well, you need to realize that you are in Drayman country up here, and that there are people here who feel that the news press has been unfair to Councilmember Drayman." And to which he replied, it was quite shocking, actually, to me, he replied, "He might be a felon." And because I was so taken aback, I couldn't come up with anything to answer him, except "He might not." And then he said, "We'll see." This has bothered me greatly for the week. As I write for the news press, I know that the editor has a great deal of influence in what he wants to publish and what he does not want to publish. This is an election time. I would normally not come with an issue for an employer of mine. I would not come publicly. But because this has been such a public issue, I've watched a few of the meetings where Councilmember Drayman has felt that he was being, there was bias in the press against him. And I always thought, "Well, he might be a little paranoid." I don't believe that anymore. I believe that there is bias. I don't like what has occurred. And so today, I tendered my resignation at the news press and said, "I will not be writing for you any longer." This is still, this will continue to bother me. I've had a couple of discussions with Mr. Evans since this afternoon, when I tendered my resignation. But I wanted to put it out there. It is the election. It has gotten nasty. I don't like it, and it, it just, I don't want to be part of this any longer. Thank you.
Next speaker is from the Seroptimist International of Glendale, Janet Hamilton, Kathy Luftkowitz, and Liz Merzian.
So you can all read it. We made it large. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and staff. I am Janet Hamilton, the fundraiser committee, Chairman of the Fundraising Committee, representing Seroptimist International Glendale. We thought we'd bring a little humor into the council meeting this evening by telling you about our up-and-coming fundraiser, Bras for a Cause. Members, as well as other men and women who are talented, decorate bras, as you can see in a number of examples here. We do this to bring about awareness about breast cancer and also to raise funds. Over the past eight years, we have donated over $100,000 to our three local hospitals, Glendale Adventist Medical Center, Glendale Memorial Hospital, and Verdugo's Hills Hospital, as well as donating over $100,000 to other organizations, helping women and girls to forward these issues. And we hope to see everybody there. And if anybody else would like to speak, go ahead. We have some interesting examples of
Sure do.
Things that have supported the theme of the year, that every year it changes. Any questions? Okay.
Is it true that the winner has to wear their
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Najarian and members of the council. And Laura, would you be interested in modeling after the event? I'm just kidding. My name's Liz Merzian, and I'm President of Seroptimist International Glendale. And we'd like to encourage you or your friends to join us in this endeavor. You may have, you may have friends that belong to other clubs or organizations or people that are particularly interested in improving the lives of women and girls. And so this is a perfect way to do that. And I've also brought, for those of you who do not have or no longer have your Bras for a Cause pin, I've brought a pin for each one of you. And I'll go ahead and get it over here, and we can distribute it to all of you.
Wow.
Kathy? Kathy's our founder. She's, she's the brainchild of this entire event.
I'm the culprit.
Yeah, the culprit.
I believe Laura was a judge. Yes. Tough job.
Maybe a judge this year.
What?
This year, I'll be a judge.
Oh, okay. Well, you, you have a tough job ahead of you, because I allude to the bra, the very first year that was decorated, and it was an alien, and it had three cups. It was, it was remarkable, some of the things. And I'd like to point out that oftentimes, the men that decorate the bras, they end up winning. So, men, use your creative talents.
Well, thank you. April 9th and
Oh, 6:00 at the Oakmont Country Club. Oh, 5:30. I'll be there at 6:00.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing our attention to this great cause. Very good. Leon Mayer?
Evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council and staff. First of all, I'd like to make a serious announcement. I'm here for the Friends at the Library and indirectly for the library. And we have events all year round, sometimes on weekends. And the parking, we recommend, is the three-hour parking at the parking structure on Maryland, right across from the library, and you get validated at the library. If you park at the library itself, either in front, it's a half hour, and it's an hour to the side of the library. And you'll get ticketed. People get ticketed sometimes on Sundays. And I've been asked to make this announcement, and I'm making it. Now, I would like to be a little whatever. I'm not prejudiced, as far as being with the library, in favor of anybody. We try to bring everybody worth consideration by the public to the library. We've had John Wooden from UCLA, and now we're bringing Dr. Arthur Bartner, who is the director of the marching band for 40 years. And he is going to talk about his book and also show some films and slides, The Man on the Ladder, the 40-year history of Dr. Arthur Bartner. And the book is going to be a great book. And again, I know this is mainly for SC people, but if anybody else is interested, you're welcome to come. And that will be on Thursday, April 21st, 7:00 at the library. And it'll be a great event. The Spirit of Troy, Dr. Arthur Bartner, 40 years, director of the great USC marching band. Now, I have enough time. We have another great event coming up May 4th. The event is Lisa Napoli to talk about her book, What I Learned in Bhutan, The Happiest Kingdom on Earth, and, which is Radio Shangri-La. Now, I'll read this to get it. "A chance encounter led journalist Lisa Napoli to the adventure of a lifetime. Leaving behind her job in public radio and her life in L.A., she moved to the tiny Himalayan kingdom of Bhutan to volunteer at the country's first youth radio station. Along the way, she found the world is a beautiful and complicated place, and learned to appreciate life in a way she never imagined." Now, we just had the high school literature class for Susan Straight. And this lady is an accomplished and well-known journalist, and she helped this Radio Shangri-La, which was run by youths and young adults. And she helped them on two occasions. She spent time in Bhutan. And of course, we all know Shangri-La is Lost Horizon, Ronald Coleman, and right in the middle of the Himalayan Mountains. So it should be a great event, and that will be May 4th, 7:00. And park at the structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next speaker is Arlene Vidor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Arlene Vidor. I'm with the Associates of the Brand Library. I want to thank you for your tribute to Jane Friend. She was absolutely one of the most inspirational and determined people I've ever met in my life, and we're going to miss her a lot. I'm just sorry she's not going to see the library restoration and the renovation of the library system at the Brand Library. That's something she really would have appreciated. But I thought, in her honor and her memory, I would just announce a few upcoming events. I think I submitted a flyer to all of you. And these are just some musical events that are coming up. Saturday, April 2nd at 3:00, Elemental Harmony, a beautiful a cappella women's musical group, is going to perform. On May 1st, Mark Ropson, a fine pianist, is going to perform Liszt at the library. That's also at 3:00. And on June 12th, the Helios Guitar Quartet is going to perform Bach, so, also at 3:00. So these are free performances, and we sponsor a number of things at the library. Music dance is coming up. I don't have the information on that yet, as well as arts events, and we even have some films this year. So please log on to brandlibrary.org and check it out, and we hope to see you there. Jane, we love you.
I don't have any other cards for this portion of oral communications. We will move on to the next item.
Item 7, under Adoption of Ordinances 7A, is ordinance amending Section 2.28020 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, creating the position of Chief Assistant Director of Community Development Department, offered on March 22nd, 2011 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mayor, move 7A.
Second. Cards, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes.
Next item?
7B is ordinance amending Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to parking amendments in downtown specific plan zones. This was also offered on March 22nd, 2011 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mayor, move 7B.
Second. Cards, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes.
Next item?
7C is ordinance adding Chapter 1.24 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to issuance of administrative citations for specified violations of Title 30 and transportation demand and parking in Lou Fees, offered also March 22nd, 2011 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mayor, move 7C.
Second. Cards, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes.
Next item?
7D is an ordinance authorizing city manager
Herbert? We'd like to take items 7D off calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I did have a speaker card submitted.
I might, I might just note, actually, I signed all the various documents today with Mona. The legislature did not take up the matter of the state budget this week, so this ordinance and the various city actions are really unnecessary.
Okay. So this was, so the lease remains
The lease is with the Redevelopment Agency, Mr. Mayor.
Right. I'm sorry.
The lease is, is with the Redevelopment Agency. And if you recall, this is sort of the dual track we were following with the city, just in case the legislature took action last weekend. It is unnecessary.
Okay. Well, I do have someone who submitted a card, and I'll permit her the opportunity to address us, even though the item is off calendar.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me at least to read the item into the record, so viewers at home can follow us. 7D is ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a 15-year lease with the Museum of Neon Art. This was offered on March 22nd, 2011 by Councilmember Drayman.
A card from Gabrielle O'Sullivan.
Good evening. My name is Gabrielle O'Sullivan. I do not have a criminal record. I'm not affiliated to the Vanguard. I'm not running for city council, and most people who know me do not consider me a gadfly. I am a resident of Glendale. I work here and spend all my money here. I have contributed to the cultural life of Glendale by contributing large amounts of money to the nonprofit theater, Luna Playhouse, in San Fernando Road. I therefore believe that my comments have legitimacy. I am here to register my objection to the new project the city council purports, the Museum of Neon Art. The city is proposing to spend millions of dollars on renovating the space in Brand Boulevard. On top of that expenditure, donating $1 million for further renovations to be spent by the museum, providing the organization with two years' free rent, then gradually expecting them to pay rent over a 15-year period. There are many small nonprofit organizations in this city who struggle to keep alive. The Opera Guild, for instance, provide a wonderful introduction to this classical form of music, bringing their trained and accomplished singers to schools. There are youth orchestras with huge enthusiasm and talent but lack funding. Glendale High School's production of working, for instance, wanted to take part in the International Theater Festival in Edinburgh, but they didn't have the money. What better ambassadors for Glendale than 38 hard-working and talented young people showing their commitment to the arts to other people from around the world? By the way, I do not represent anybody from Glendale High. I am just speaking on my own behalf. The temporary homeless shelter that opens for a few months, and sometimes only when the temperature falls below 50 degrees. Wouldn't making permanent provision for the less fortunate in society, a humanitarian project of which the Redevelopment Agency could be proud, be money worth spending? Nightclubs are going to be permitted. Will pole dancing be the next art form which the city has to contribute to? The United States ranks 35 out of 57 in math and 39 out of 857 in science in the overall educational performance of industrial countries. Here in Glendale, there is no historical museum or science museum, yet there will be a neon museum. It is not elitist to hope or expect a city to consider long-term goals for the improvement of the future generations, to help them aspire to experiences beyond their immediate scope, and give them opportunities for culture and enlightenment. May I finish?
How much more do you have?
Just a few more sentences.
Yes.
Thank you. It seems to me that the council members are more concerned with their legacy to the city than the city's legacy. There have been pet projects like the New Horizons and ADI Housing Development who've had no oversight, and have caused great financial and social embarrassment to the city. I believe that the priorities of the council are not just. A vast number of people living here pay no attention to the machinations of city council activity. That is obviously clear from the very low turnout at city council elections. Therefore, you have carte blanche to implement whatever you decide. However, I believe that there are a few individuals who are concerned and motivated to come and express their opinions during oral communications, and we are entitled to do so.
You could conclude in one more sentence?
In closing, I believe there are many worthwhile, low-profile causes in the city. I would prefer to see money spent in a more community-centered manner. Thank you.
Thank you. 7D then is off calendar. We don't need a vote for that to take it. Okay. Let's move to the next item.
Next item, under Action Items, and just as a reminder, 7D was taken off the agenda. At, under Action Items, at 8A is director of Public Works regarding citywide bike racks. At 8A1 is a motion authorizing city manager to execute a professional services agreement, awarding a contract to Applied Eco Solutions, an amount of $141,352 for obtaining, designing, and installing citywide bike racks.
Mr. Begdanyan?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, on February 15th, staff issued a request for proposal for selecting contractors for the design and installation of bike racks throughout the city. We received four proposals from qualified vendors, and after evaluating each one of the proposals, committee of staff selected Applied Eco Solutions Incorporated, which is a local firm for the design and installations of bike racks throughout the city. We have also secured a total of $140,000 in grants from L.A. We have also secured a total of $140,000 in grants from LA Metro and Caltrans for the installation of the bike racks. Currently, we have about 100 bicycle racks throughout the city, and we anticipate with the funding that is available, we should be able to install an additional 250 to 280 racks throughout the city. We are requesting city council's approval to award a contract to Applied Eco Solutions Incorporated for the design and installation of these racks. Also, it's important to note that we have begun the bicycle master plan preparation. We have formed a bicycle advisory committee. In fact, tomorrow night is our first meeting. It's a committee consisting of 16 individuals that are members of Transportation Parking Commission, Planning Commission, as well as Parks and Recreation Commission, Glendale Unified School District, Glendale Community College, Los Angeles Bicycle Coalition. There will be members of this bicycle advisory committee that would be working with us in the preparation of the bicycle master plan, as well as will provide us input in the location and the selection of these bicycle racks that we'll be installing throughout the city. The installations will begin in June of this year, and will be continuing throughout the preparation of the bicycle master plan, which is due to completion in September of this year. With that, Mr. Mayor, staff is recommending the approval of the professional agreement with Applied Eco Systems. If I can answer any more questions, I'll be happy to do so.
Mr. Montero.
I assume the meeting tomorrow night will be open to the public?
Yes, it is open.
What's the address of the people?
It will be in Room 106 at 6:00 PM in the Municipal Services Building. I left out that we will also have community meetings, outreach meetings, once we develop the first draft of the bicycle plan. To receive input from the community, there will be meetings held throughout the city for that purpose as well.
And I assume we're going to have a multiple, like looking at the bike racks, some are more traditional and others are quite modern, some are decorative, so we're going to have a choice of different racks, or one or two choices?
Yes, we will be, as I said, receive input from the bicycle advisory committee, as well as adjacent businesses where these bicycle racks will be installed, and we'll try to match the street furniture at each specific location.
Right, and I think we have to make sure that people understand it is a bike rack. I'm afraid that they're going to sort of like the, it'll be so decorative that they won't want to touch it.
Each will have a bicycle symbol on it, so it will be identified.
Well, I certainly think we're headed in the right direction. I have a lot to talk to you about, and anyway, I think this is a great idea. It's going to work real well for the citizens of Glendale and other citizens that ride their bike into town.
Thank you.
How much did the MTA get us?
Our dollar amounts, we receive Transportation Development Act funds every year, and we can allocate that for any bicycle-related expenditure. So the total from the metro is $99,000 from metro and $41,000 that we receive through the Safe Route to School grant from Caltrans.
Bicycle, this is an aside, bicycle amenities and bicycle conveniences and routes is a very fruitful funding source at metro, very favored, so let's push for that as much as we can. Other cities in this last call for projects, Burbank, for instance, really is making quite a lot of progress on there. The Chandler Bike Way they have going.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So let's just keep that, just, let's push the bike thing as much as we can, and I'll see what I can do up at metro to get it funded.
Mr. Mayor, we've also applied with Burbank on a joint grant under the call for project for Kennett Road as a bicycle boulevard, so it's a joint effort because it's a stretch that is within both jurisdictions to put in bicycle amenities and what we call a bicycle boulevard to encourage bicycle use on that, on Kennett Road.
Good idea.
Within Glendale and Burbank.
Friedman.
Yeah, I'm very happy to see this moving forward. Want to thank the staff and also Mayor Najarian for any help with the MTA. It's great that we're all pushing from different ends. And just for people who don't bicycle around, to explain the importance of bicycle racks, I try to bicycle around when I can, a lot of times I walk, but if I don't know that there's a rack somewhere nearby where I'm bicycling, I won't ride my bike there. And that's the case with a lot of people who bicycle, because you ride your bike there and have no place to put your bike. Sometimes you just have to turn around and go home, or hook it to something that you hope someone won't tow it away or give you some kind of a ticket or something. So this is something that will be a benefit to those many people who do want to do a good thing for the ecology and good thing for their own health, and not have to pay that $4, almost $5 a gallon right now in gasoline, which a lot of people just can't afford. So looking forward to seeing these interesting bike racks around town.
Okay. Thank you. There's no other comments, I have no cards.
I'll move 8A1.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
8B is Chief of Police regarding Glendale-Burbank City Jail Temporary Consolidation Agreement. B1 is a motion authorizing Chief of Police to enter into memorandum of understanding with the City of Burbank Police Department.
Thank you. Mr. Starbert.
Yes, you have Juan Lopez, jail administrator for the staff report. Juan.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm happy to say that I haven't met you.
That's a good thing.
Many people who meet him don't remember him, however, given the conditions under which they met him.
I've met a few in my career. Mr. Mayor, council members, the intent of our proposal here is basically to assist a neighboring city who's going to be undergoing repairs in our jail facility, to assist them by providing them with jail access, so they can book and process people in our jail. Back in 2002, we were able to assist them with a similar situation, and we were able to accomplish this with very little disruption whatsoever. We don't expect any disruption at this point in time. Our facility is extremely capable and ready to assist neighboring city with their needs. And essentially, the City of Burbank will flip the bill on whatever costs are associated with meals or anything that may come up as a result of that.
Six months?
The period of time is contractors expecting to get the job done within six months, which in contractor terms could be six months to eight months. So that's why we put on our report, expectation of up to about 12 months. So they anticipate to get it done within six months.
A source of revenue for many municipalities is opening their jails on a pay-to-stay program. Is Burbank planning anything really fancy to make their jail attractive to pay to stay inmates?
Yeah, they do run a pay-to-stay program at the present time, but it basically doesn't have the same movement that ours does.
We're still, I mean, we have celebrities who are, was it Kiefer Sutherland, was he here?
Yeah, we had Kiefer Sutherland. We've also had a couple of-
Paris Hilton, but we turned her away because we couldn't fit her entourage.
Yeah, that wasn't in our best interest, so we passed on that. But we do, from time to time, get Hollywood elites and that kind of thing in our facility. The one thing that's attractive about our facility is that we tend to fly under the radar. Where you will not see us on TMZ or any other network playing, giving a play-by-play. That's just something we don't do. So that's attractive to judges, and that's attractive to, you know, these folks as well.
I was about to say that Mr. Lopez is a jailer to the stars.
Very discreet, right?
He doesn't seem to have any ambitions in terms of reality shows or anything.
That's why the mayor hasn't seen me.
Okay, well, thank you, thanks very much, and we continue, I think, to try and cooperate with our neighbor, City Burbank, with data storage and transportation systems, and now it's jail, police coverage, fire, et cetera, so I think it's a great thing. Is there a motion?
8B1.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Now, return to the five-minute portion of oral communications. This is where discussion is limited. Item's not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision on the matter. City Manager, Mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Thank you. First speaker is Barry Allen, followed by Mike Mohill.
I'm Barry Allen. First off, unlike other oral communication speakers, I will stay within the jurisdictional guidelines of the Brown Act. The issues I've been speaking about since March 1st have a direct reflection and impact upon the city council and top management. It is about the processes that the city sets aside when one of their own, a city councilman, does not follow the building safety codes that he has voted on for civilians to follow. Those codes provide for building permits and building inspections. For instance, an engineering study is required when exterior party walls are violated to determine if sheer walls are required for the safety of those people on the floors above the construction. The photograph I get of inside provided demonstrates a clear attempt to defraud the City of Glendale by an elected official. It is an effort designed to cover up the need for inspection by filing misleading documents and misrepresenting the scope of work in the permits. Mr. Drayman filed for his permits after I made the complaint to Neighborhood Services and while not knowing that Vanguard had those pictures. Mr. Drayman has bypassed the requirements for permits and inspections. He then filed for an after-the-fact building permit for kitchen cabinets and low-flow toilets, and then, only after it was made public by Vanguard. He failed to get permits for five vinyl windows, a new electrical panel, and new wiring, new plumbing, new ductwork, and new recessed lighting, which is prohibited at Stan Crest. He said it's the responsibility of the HOA to get permits. The HOA stands on its CCNRs that require the owner to get the permits. Yet Drayman says the HOA is responsible, then why hasn't he filed his own complaint with city code enforcement? Next, here's the question, who actually paid for the work? On a public document, Mr. Drayman stated under oath that he has an outstanding loan from a principal of National Fire, a contractor of ADI. Just last week, he stated that he paid for everything. He told supporters that he obtained a bank loan for $200,000 using the condo for collateral. Was that an unrecorded mortgage from a bank? Unbelievable. Public records show only one loan in 2006 for $240,000, even before he was on the city council. The news press wrote, "The Drayman has a dispute with a sub over $10,000 to $30,000 for work." Does that mean that bill is paid or unpaid? Each lie digs the hole deeper. What documents does the public need to see? The HOA CCNRs, the construction contract with National Fire, the loan mentioned in his January 2011 700 form, the bank loan to pay off the contractor, the paid release from the subs, the council checks representing his payment for all the work done at his Glendale condo? This council, that has approved subpoenas and legal actions, has the duty to demand an immediate investigation to clear the air. If they don't, then it has the appearance of, the perception of, a cover-up, complicity by those sitting on the dais. It would be in the public's interest if Mr. Drayman and his supporters discontinued the assault by way of untrue and false allegations on the character of the messenger of the information and focus on presenting evidence of his innocence. The fact that neither Mr. Drayman nor his supporters have made any attempt to provide counter evidence has caused several organizations to withhold their endorsements in this election cycle. Even after the election, the cloud of suspicion and complicity will not go away. The city's executive manager, management, and elected council have a mutual obligation to restore the public's trust by authorizing an outside entity to conduct a thorough investigation and present its findings publicly. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you. Sir Mohill is followed by Lorraine Mohill.
Want to grab the mic? You can.
Before I start, Mayor Najarian, I'd like to, my apologies on the telephone, I have a new phone, it did a thing on itself, okay? Tonight, I'd like to talk about an issue that's been very much in the news lately, about the pensions of city employees. City council members tell us that the average city employee has a pension approximately $27,000 a year. That's true for short-term employees. But we have many employees making over $200,000, and they're working 20 years with the city, 25 and some 30. And this is how we get pensions of over $100,000 for retirees who retired at age 55 and live anywhere between 10 and 15 years beyond that, which we, the taxpayers, get to pay. Again, my name is Mike Mohill. Thank you. The, wrong side, sorry about that, folks. The city has CalPERS, California Public Employees Retirement System, that they all pay into. The Glendale Firefighters Association has a formula in the past of 3% at 50 years when they retire, for full benefits. In January of this year, the city council renegotiated with several unions, and in my opinion, they just kicked the can because there was no cut in the actual pension. Notice that in 2011, the Firefighters Association is going to have 3% at 55. The public gets Social Security. The Glendale Managers Association and Fire sworn employees was 3% at 50 years of age. Now, in 2011, will be 3% at 55. The Glendale Managers Association and miscellaneous employees, their formula was 2.5% at 55, and now it's going to be 2% at 55, and the public gets Social Security. Folks, this 3% could be 2.5% or it could be 2%. But that union negotiated with the city council members and stayed with their 3% at 55 instead. That's very important. The city manager, his pension is paid by the taxpayers 100%. The Glendale City Employees Association, their pension in 2010 was 2.5% at 55, and now it's going to be 2% at 55. The public gets Social Security. There are approximately 1,600 members of the CEAA, which is the Glendale City Employees Association. They took a 1.5% salary cut in the year 2008. They are the only union that did that. No other union did that, to date. Now, let's take an example of how the salaries are calculated. Let's start with an individual whose last year of working was $200,000 annual salary. With the formula of 3%, and he worked 20 years. The main thing, and when they do the calculation, ladies and gentlemen, is the number of years of working and the percentage, 2.5, 2, 3%, whatever the union can get. In this case, the Firefighters Association are getting 3%. The people who pushed the broom, excuse me, the clerks, the trash people, they get a cut in salary to 1.5%, and their new salary is going to be 2%. And, oh, by the way, that's for the new employees. So all they've been doing right now is nothing but kicking the can down the road. They really did nothing in 2010 to change the pension obligation, which right now is setting like about $1.5, pardon me, $1 million unfunded liabilities for pensions. Okay, here we go. Individual $200,000 salary, 3%, individual worked 20 years. We take 3% times 20 years, is 60%. 60% of $200,000 salary comes to $120,000 annual salary, or $10,000 a month. And I'm living, and many of us in this room are living on Social Security. Is this fair, ladies and gentlemen? The public? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I’m sorry. That’s my men.
That’s your cue.
I’m done. Okay, thank you very much. My name is Mike Mohill, candidate for city council.
Lorraine Mohill. Okay, Mrs. Mohill passes. Charles Hooker, followed by Herbert Milano.
Mayor, Mayor, city council members, my name is Charles Hooker, longtime resident of Glendale, in fact, native. First, one thing I’d like to say, why does Glendale need all of the redevelopment and building? Who is getting the kickbacks? Our folks, we’re in a recession. The city does not all, doesn’t have enough parking, they do not have, the streets are not big enough for all these vehicles and everything. We’ve had mayors and city council people back in the 1970s and 80s, who with the help of the city council and planning, rubber stamped all of these permits to build all of these condominiums and apartments throughout Glendale. What about the water and electricity? They didn’t think about that, that we’re going through right now. And are we going to continue building on all of these vacant lands that we have? We’re already making that, where Fred Hodder Ford is, into another place that we don’t need in Montrose. Why do we have, one building, well, Montrose does not need any building over there. And I want to say thank you to Cesar Chavez for all your good work. At one time, Glendale was a city with oranges and citrus and grape vineyards. It was nothing like what it is now. There was one lady who worked for our great local paper in Glendale that was founded in 1905. To her and to all of the people, and especially to all the writers there, the truth will set you free. To, another thing I’d like to say to all the people who have to cheer and clap their hands, try to remember, at the city council member, at meetings, we are not at a Little League game. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. For very close to the past, for the better part of 10 years, I have attended practically every commission or committee meeting that has ever been established here in the city of Glendale. When it comes to city council meetings, of which I have made presentations, I think there have been over 400. And I have made a similar number in the Housing Authority and Redevelopment Agency. I’ve sometimes been the sole speaker at the Glendale Water and Power, and oftentimes the sole attendant. And for the past several years, I’ve been practically the only person showing up at the audit committee meetings. My point in bringing this up is that I’ve taken the time to request additional information, study the finances of the city, to try to get an assessment as to why is it that certain policies never take hold? For a long time, I was, I was under the impression that the, once the direction and the plans are set, that it is the city’s manager’s responsibility to take it forward. And for a long time, I did not feel very positive about Mr. Starbird in that regard. But then, as I spoken to other individuals who are either council members at other cities or mayors at other cities, they said, they tell me, “Don’t forget the rule of three. It takes three council members to set the direction.” So no matter what the city manager may want to do, we’re still subject to the rule of three councilmen who are going to set the direction for the city. And that was so incredibly obvious to me today. Because for a long time, since the 1990s, we’ve had significant plans within the city with regard to addressing the shortage of parkland in South Glendale. It was defined specifically in the Greater Downtown Specific Plan. It was addressed in multiple documents having to do with Sequoia, and it was one of the reasons why I filed suit against the city a few years ago. The other problem that we have had in Southern Glendale is significant park shortage, parking shortage. We have a significant increase in the amount of traffic, and the quality of life has deteriorated. Recreational Planning Area 10 has not had a single square foot of additional parkland in decades, while the population continues to increase. The unfortunate part about having residence, or having property, or having, being a stakeholder in this area, is that year after year, after promises are being given to me and to others that you will address the issues of Southern Glendale, invariably, you fail to do so. We get from time to time, small postage stamp-sized parks in one corner or the other, but it addresses only the needs of kids and the very elderly. It does not address the needs of youth, and there are significant shortages with regard to the plans that the city has to address in a goal of about six acres per thousand. We have approximately .002 acres per thousand residents, and the density continues to increase. Today, during the Redevelopment Agency meeting, you basically gave away, through your variances, three council members, Mr. Quintero, Ms. Friedman, and Ms. Draymond, to fail to address the issues that I presented before you, having to do with a significant parking shortage. Mr. David Weaver was right on point. Mr. Najarian was likewise. But we have this rule of three. If you get together to propose and push along a particular development project, even though it impacts negatively the conditions of the residents of the area, you push ahead. The name of the game for many, many years has been, give parking variances, you know, if you are basically, have a good relationship with that developer. But that is deteriorating the impact on the residents of Glendale, especially south of the 134, where we have very little active representation. I thought, Mr. Draymond, that when you ran four years ago, you were going to represent all of Glendale. But that, to me, especially as demonstrated today, is not the case. Ms. Friedman was likewise when you ran two years ago, that you would be a councilperson for all of Glendale. We have significant problems. Significant problems where residents cannot find additional parking for their guests on the streets. You try it out. I made, went to the TPC numerous times requesting different ways of measuring that problem, but it’s not addressed. I want to apologize to Mr. Starbird, because in many cases, I think I was way too rash in my opinions about him and about the direction that the city has taken. Because at the end of the day, the rule of three continues to impact us significantly and in a very, in a very negative way in South Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Morgan, followed by Sharon Weissman, and Bill Weissman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, Mr. Starbird’s staff. Good evening, Glendale. We only have one more week of all of this hyperbole. I’d like to address something that I was speaking about last week, the Glendale News Press and its failure to actually address city issues in its pages. Again, sadly, the Glendale News Press has last week forgotten the basic rules of journalism: who, what, when, where. It seems that the Glendale News Press reports a story, especially their version, of a negative one. They seem to find a who, but when the story is a positive one, that element seems to be missing. I encourage the Glendale News Press to try harder, or what happened tonight with Sharon Ragavachary will happen to all of its readership. As to another means of communication concerning Mr. Allen, also mentioned to this podium, thanks for getting my name right. And again, I have the same First Amendment rights as everyone else has. And rather than publish anonymous letters about me on your blog, please contact me directly, as you know how to reach me. Finally, and most importantly, I encourage all citizens of Glendale to vote Tuesday, April 5th. Find out where your precincts are and what your candidates stand for at www.glandevotes.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sharon Weissman, Bill Weissman, and then Nancy Kent.
Mayor Najarian, council and staff, I’m Sharon Weissman from far north Glendale, and I’m speaking as an individual. I came tonight to urge everyone to vote and to thank all of the elected officials and volunteer commissioners and board members who serve Glendale. These people put in countless hours to research and figure out details that could put insomniacs to sleep, and they often receive only complaints in return, and in fact, some rather pointed, vicious complaints in some local blogs. And we all owe them our thanks and support. And I’d like to thank the city workers too, some of whom are vilified at this podium irresponsibly too. And I think they work very hard and put in extra hours and shouldn’t have to be subject to insults, even past their retirement, when they’re, you know, taking home things they contributed to and earned. Lately, a small group of naysayers, led by Barry Allen, have tried to poison public discourse in Glendale with lies and innuendos. Please don’t let this small group of sad, angry people keep all the good folks of Glendale away from the polls. The Glendale News Press editor, Dan Evans, has obviously become part of current events, as Sharon Ragavachary noted earlier, and he cannot be objective. And for Mr. Evans to have concluded Councilman Draymond guilty of something without even being any charges, anything, is extremely troubling. As those who were up in Dunsmore Park for last week’s forum on the Glendale Unified School District Board of Education candidates probably have surmised, I’m the woman who complained that Dan Evans was there, but ironically, it had absolutely nothing to do with the paper’s coverage of Mr. Draymond or anything to do with the city council. The paper had not officially endorsed anyone in the city council race. However, I was surprised to see Mr. Evans moderating a forum in which his paper had endorsed candidates. I can still consider that an obvious breach of ethics. I clarified after the forum with Mr. Evans that he thinks it’s okay to be part of, indeed, the head of an editorial board who endorses two candidates and yet moderate a forum of those candidates with follow-up questions that seemed, in some cases, to aid his chosen hopefuls. The fact that he also teaches mass media ethics at Cal State Long Beach is even more disturbing to me. I really fear for the future of journalism. And what I’m asking all the voters and everyone listening in Glendale and the Unified School District, to please disregard the theatrics from Barry Allen, Mike Mohill, Herbert Milano, the other naysayers, and the poor and biased Glendale News Press coverage, and come out next Tuesday anyway, make your choices, please rise above the atmosphere here. We’re better than this, and we can prove the naysayers that will listen to the truth. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Bill Weissman, Nancy Kent, and David Fortune.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weissman, speaking as a private individual from beautiful far north Glendale. And thank you for hanging in to this late, late hour of 7:35, where the people finally get to express our opinions, long after the rest of Glendale has gone to bed. Excuse me. I’m here tonight to talk about, obviously, one of our favorite subjects, which is parking in downtown Glendale. And first, I’d like to start by thanking you for approving the parking amendments to the downtown specific plan that you did this evening. Because I had to take one of our cats to the vet today, I could not come down in person for the afternoon meetings, but I did watch as much on TV as I could and was paying particular attention to the debate regarding the Lemley Development and some of the parking issues. And I can understand why Mayor Najarian and Councilman Weaver voted no. Their reasons are understandable, and they make sense to me. What I was a little bit surprised was to hear some negative discussion from the mayor regarding Bonnie Nelson, and I kind of wanted to address that because I’ve worked since 2008 with Nelson Nygaard, and I believe them to be very highly qualified and very professional. You know, I think their recommendations are based on solid data and years of experience. And more than anything else, they are based on the microeconomic principles of supply and demand. Because that, ladies and gentlemen, is what governs parking behavior. This is why you get people circling a block, looking for free spaces, rather than walk half a block, as Mr. Weaver said, to say, to park in the orange street structure. They want to be right there next to it. And what that means is that our pricing model is wrong for our parking. Supply and demand is the most important factor in driver and parking behavior. Earlier, around New Year’s time, Sharon and I were up in San Francisco for a few days, and we stayed at the Intercontinental Hotel at Fifth and Howard. You want to park at that hotel, it’s valet parking only, and it is $53 a day. Pretty steep. There is a public parking garage across the street at Fifth and Mission, a very big parking garage. That one only costs $30 a day. And I will point out that this is adjacent to a block where a 1 million-square-foot Bloomingdale’s retail development was open, and Sharon and I were in there wandering around, and it was full of people. Zero parking spaces for that 1 million-square-foot development. I am not claiming that we are anything like San Francisco. Our public transportation is nowhere near to the level of theirs. It is an apples and oranges comparison, but the point I’m trying to make is that it is supply and demand and price that affect parking behavior. When we do implement parking changes in this city, I believe they must be implemented as a package that protects residential neighborhoods. Obviously, overflow parking into residential neighborhoods is an issue that does need to be addressed. But we are working in the context of a downtown specific plan that calls for a vibrant and walkable downtown. And part of that vision has involved, of necessity, increased residential density in the downtown area. Believe me, I stay awake at night, you know, worrying about possible decisions that may cause problems, especially parking problems. It is serious. But again, supply and demand is what it comes down to, and pricing. And especially with the price of gasoline approaching $5 a gallon, there are going to be more and more incentives, and there are going to be economic incentives, that are going to keep people out of their cars and push people into other modes of transportation. And I think it is those incentives and that changed behavior that will make it feasible to have developments downtown, like the Lemley, that include a residential element. And I believe it’s true that the developer would not be offering those units if he doesn’t think he can get tenants for them, and knowing, given the case, the tenants know full well, “Oh, if I’m going to have a car, I’m not going to be able to park it right close to where I live.” And if these changes can be implemented as part of a package where we’re making sure we protect residential neighborhoods from overflow parking, I think it is going to be feasible, and we can move ahead with developments such as the Lemley that don’t provide the parking according to the current code. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Nancy Kent, David Fortune, and then Mike Labudzki.
My name is Nancy Kent. I’m a resident of southeast Glendale. Number one, has anyone already mentioned that the city seal that used to be in this room is now in the election office in the police building? Number two, I would like to add my voice to the people who have been speaking here in recent weeks to say that we don’t see any facts to support the accusations of corruption that are being leveled against the city council and specifically against Councilman John Draymond by Barry Allen, by city council candidate Mike Mohill, and by the Glendale News Press. How can we expect good people to run for office when they are repeatedly subjected to false accusations? If these get repeated often enough, they tend to stick. So residents who see that there is no basis for these accusations want to counter them. Thank you to Lynn Myers. The video of a recent city council meeting shows her saying something like, she’ll speak here as often as Barry Allen speaks here, so that she can remind people that Barry Allen is, to quote her, “The con man who conned her and other Glendale residents when...” is, to quote her, "the con man who conned her and other Glendale residents when Barry Allen did an unsolicited request for donations for the legal defense of the Thompsons." I'll skip the details of that story, which have been repeated here several times, but I am amazed that Barry Allen, after doing something that sleazy, has the nerve to keep speaking at this forum. But he does. Next point, the news press printed a letter by candidate Mike Moehl, March 18th, containing false accusations against the city council and against John Draymond specifically regarding ADI. The next day, the news press ran a correction buried low on page four stating accusations in that letter were incorrect and stating the actual facts. This correction did not mention that the untrue accusations were done by Mike Moehl. Having city watchdogs is a good thing, but not watchdogs who make false accusations. Next point, the extremely misleading, repeat, misleading Glendale News Press front page above the fold headline on March 18th, quote, "ADI manager is tied to Draymond remodel", end quote. Dun-dun. Supports the theory other residents have mentioned at this microphone recently that because some other Los Angeles Times reporters broke the story of real corruption in the city of Bell, the Glendale News Press is trying to spin a Bell-type story out of nothing. If you read the March 18th article under that damning headline, you see there's nothing there to support that headline. A fax number of a company with a different name is the same as the fax number of a former ADI office? That's ridiculous. That's what the headline was based on. This is unacceptable journalism. At last week's city council meeting, Bill Weisman said he had studied the city documents related to an earlier Glendale News Press article about the warnings to the city council about ADI. Bill carefully read the city documents involved and then contacted the news press editor because accusations in the article were not supported by the documents. The response of the editor? Bill was encouraged to submit a letter to the editor about this, which he did, and then the news press did not print his letter. Can the city council legislate that the Glendale News Press print Bill Weisman's letter? No, and that's not a slippery slope that anybody wants to go down. Can the city council prevent false accusations from being made here? No, but you and residents can counter false accusations with our statements. And I will close by saying that I think I am very well represented by Councilman John
I'd like to short clock. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmen, City Manager, Staff. My name is Dave Fortune, longtime resident businessman in the community. A few weeks ago, my brother's granddaughter came to town. They're on college break from the east and they're in Glendale and they asked me, you know, what should we go and see? I said, well, you know, I know you've got limited money, but go see the Americana. You might, with your limited budget, go over to the Galleria, but by all means, by all means, see the downtown redevelopment and the two anchor stores. On the south, we have Bevmo, and on the north, we have Salvation Army. Boy, I tell you, this redevelopment is really going. Which leads me into the subject that I really do want to talk about, and that's in the news press, the much maligned news press, as it were, about the new ink, set to ink the new museum deal. And I just can't believe this thing because I just cited down some facts. Fifteen-year lease, $5.2 million. This is a city that has budget constraints, has all sorts of financial problems. $5.2 million. It's going to re-energize the area across from the Americana. Well, Rick Caruso's got to love it. You know, he's selling these overpriced condominiums and you look at this blighted area, he's got to love this thing. Has anybody ever visited the chess park recently? Another, what, $500,000 deal. Award-winning chess park. You go over there, they got oversized pieces. No one knows that they're chess pieces until you really take a good look. $500,000. Now, what happened is the city, the arts and entertainment group has managed, as Marie Fish pointed out in today's paper, they've managed to lose a noise within. And now we've got this neon art museum that couldn't make it in Los Angeles. They lost their lease, they shopped it around for two years, nobody wanted it, and they come to Glendale and they found some sympathetic ears. You look at this thing and I tell you, they got a diver that's going to be at the top of this thing. Let me tell you what they should get there. They should go to the circus and get a white elephant because that's what this thing is going to be. We're getting free rent for two years. And there's a step in, we don't know what the figures are, and Councilman Weber, but I guess it's Weaver actually, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Another misprint from the news press. At any rate, what does Dave Weaver say? He says, "Councilman Dave Weaver indicated," and pardon me, "he would not support the lease agreement, seeing and not seen records showing the museum was financially viable." This place has been in operation for years. Let's see some figures. How much money have they made? What are the financials on this thing? Free rent for two years. Then it's going to step up to $5,000. They're never going to make that $5,000. And is the $5,000 gross? Is it net lease? Let's get some facts and figures on this thing. And, you know, I heard you deferred this and let's just, well, I was going to use a naval term, but let's find a round cylinder and put it in there. Now, I've got a few minutes left, not much. There's been a lot, I've been watching the city council and there's been a lot of talk about Barry Allen. And disclaimer, I carry no brief for Barry Allen nor for the news press. And one fellow said his letter was not printed. Well, I wrote a letter to the news press. They don't print every letter. But this is what I, I started off, I'm running out of time. "Some have been turned off by the number of charges, allegations, or revelations leveled at candidates in this year's race for city council. While this writer shares some of the concern and would hope for a more civil discourse, it is in keeping with the rough and tumble nature of American politics. As former President Harry S. Truman once remarked, 'If you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen.'" Instead of bemoaning the sorry state of the campaign, let's take a few minutes as voters to see how we might benefit. And then I've gone on to say, look, some of the charges have been made about things that happened in the past and there are current charges against one of the sitting city council members. Let me sum up by saying Caesar's wife must be above suspicion. The associates of public figures must not even be suspected of wrongdoing. And Caesar set his wife aside because she was associated with this. This is one of the major issues of the campaign. The candidates should come forward with all the facts and not let all this innuendo come out. And I have more to say, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fortune.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Last Tuesday, I was still continuing on the Armenian genocide. I won't interrupt that subject for a quick summary of, let's say, business as usual in the city. Here I have a paper release about what happened in 2007 in the place when I used to live, 2121 Valderas. It's called Falls of Montrose. It's owned by Star Properties LLC located in Beverly Hills, California. That means their office is located there. Now, the article is called Court Rules for Terrorists. Now, over 20 people were evicted on the spot when the company moved in. What did the city did? The city went to court. And what the court decided? Well, nothing, because the city settled for peanuts. Now, several residents went to the court and got reimbursed for horrible experiences. But they were just a bunch of people, about 5% of the residents there, and they got awarded $3,000 per head. You should be in the meeting with the vice president of Star Properties LLC when their ladies were crying because of their babies, because one thought that she's going to be raped. By who? By the staff of Star Properties entering her apartment at 9 o'clock PM when she was in the shower. And what happened? We had laws here that protected residents. Now, what kind of laws are being used to let the company like that go? You know what people were saying there? We are in Iraq. We are under bombardment here. The staff made holes in the roof. And at 10 o'clock at night, they were coming with the torchlight and searching for something inside where the residents. I personally had a hole to my neighbor. You know, I could see her sitting on the toilet for two weeks. Now, I want to quickly read my list of crimes that the Glendale Police Department committed against me. Twice kidnapping, sexual abuse, life endangerment to me and the residence of 2121 Valderas Drive. Actually, your SWAT team member reloaded the gun like that in my face. Theft, significant value and historic values, assault by police officer under influence of drugs, denying the run to free practice of religion, illegal arrest, illegal interrogation, et cetera, et cetera. I have 26 points here, but I want to summarize them quickly because I want to get to next I, Rafa Labudzki, is saying that they also committed crimes against humanity, including genocide. And this is what it is, ladies and gentlemen. Read it very carefully. Church mission. Those people that genocide the people they pretend to be lovely Adventists, they have nothing to do with the church. This is abuse of religion, abuse of faith, abuse of people. Now, after they drag you with the drugs that induce wrong habits and addiction, they give you the paper. You can break the smoking habit, but they prescribe you a further living hospital with taking those drugs. So you can live your habit, except that when you're taking drugs inducing that habit, there is not an easy thing to do. Last thing, this is five pages that I wrote about what happened in that place, all criminals and crimes against humanity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll be here next week though. I don't have any other cards for oral communications. Are there any comments? Ms. Friedman.
You know, earlier today, we had a discussion, that was referenced tonight, about parking, about a new project coming in, which is a Lemley Theater, and whether that parking, whether that project would cause a negative parking impact in the area, whether it wouldn't. We had a philosophical discussion, which has been had in our Transportation and Parking Commission as well, about how we park our developments and how we park our businesses in the downtown. And these are very healthy dialogues. And even though Mr. Najarian and Mr. Weaver and myself disagreed on this issue, we had a very healthy debate and they were, they made great points that I don't disagree with. We just have a different perspective. Mr. Fortune, who came today, brings a perspective I don't necessarily agree with, but I understand his perspective and I appreciate him coming here. And these are healthy, healthy things for us to be discussing as a city. But what's not productive to me is the implication from some speakers, or one speaker in particular, that if you disagree with his opinion or anything he says, that the only reason must be that either you don't care or that you're corrupt. And usually it's the latter, it's usually corruption. You know, it can't just be that you have a philosophical disagreement or that you have a different perspective. It has to be that you've betrayed your promises, that you're corrupt or bought off. And I just find that a place from which discourse cannot happen, from which no rational discussion can ever occur, and from which is not a healthy discussion for the community to have and not even a discussion about those issues. So I just wanted to make that point and to thank the people who do come here and who talk about whatever issues they're interested in because it is that discourse and that dialogue that makes this a dynamic process and a process that's healthy and productive.
But what amazes me is the sheer hypocrisy, Mr. Milano, the sheer hypocrisy. One thing is the endless statistics. He says he's spoken 400 times. It seems more like 4,000 times, but I'll take him at his word. But his statistics are here, there, I mean, whatever, trying to prove a point. But when he focuses on parking, when he focuses on the lack of park space in South Glendale, the hypocrisy of someone who is in a class of people that basically trashed this city, those overbuilt apartment buildings, I call them Soviet-style buildings that are just tore apart block after block, to have that person come to the podium and talk about parking issues and blame the current council and so forth, this is what you chose to do with your money. You invested in an apartment building. When you drive down the street where this particular apartment building is, you still see some very nice single-family homes and then you see his building. So that person who kind of helped ruin that street now comes to the podium and is holier than thou. That's what I find amazing, that he continues to do it week after week. But as they say, it's a free country, so.
Mr. Draymond.
Well, you know, I just, there's a couple of things I've got to respond to. I listened to the week after week of Mr. Allen coming here. And I don't know whether, you know, I don't know whether Barry needs to get a hobby or something, other than sitting in his pajamas at night, digging, trying to dig up dirt on the internet, or then just making it up. All this talk about loans and he doesn't have a clue as to what he's talking about and he just makes stuff up. And so this was so humorous to me, this most recent one, that I just had, I had to give you a sample of it because it's, it's just really gotten out there. The less and less that Barry has any traction, the more outrageous it becomes, but also more humorous. Here's an example. As many of you know, or if you know me well, you know, I don't read Vanguard and haven't for some time, but that doesn't mean that some people who, who are just discovering that there's this thing called Vanguard won't see some excerpt and think, oh my God, John needs to know about this and they'll forward something to me. So Barry wrote, and by the way, if you haven't looked at it, Barry always, he writes everything that's in it except for the stuff that Mr. Milano writes, the endless essays that Mr. Milano writes. But other than that, Barry writes everything, including the letters to the editor and all that, and he never cites names, he just puts, you know, initials. So Barry wrote this piece about my genealogy and it's kind of humorous. He put this thing in there about my genealogy, you know. So he put in there that, because I referenced that my mother's family were victims of the Holocaust and some were Holocaust survivors. So apparently, I don't know my family. Apparently, I'm all wrong about that because Barry found the truth. Here's what he wrote. First of all, he made the astounding discovery, Mr. Mayor, that both of my parents were born in the United States. Wow, that's amazing. I could have told you that. I could have told you that. Of course, I have. Everybody, practically everybody on the scene knows my dad. Absolutely. My dad was a veteran of World War II, and my mom was a registered nurse, both born in this country. That's astounding. Then he went on to some fiction about the rest of my family. Claimed my father was born in Poland. He was not. He was born in Germany. He claimed my grandmother was named, well, I don't know what name he was using, but it's not a name that's related to me. He claimed she was born in the Ukraine. She wasn't. She was born in Estonia. He assigned some incorrect name to my mother's family and ascribed them as being from Russia. Wrong again. They were Norwegians. Close. They were Norwegians who settled in Norway in the 1400s, Norway being the only Scandinavian country that would allow Jews to own property at the time. And by the way, they were Sephardic Jews. For those who are not aware, all living Jews in Norway during the war were consolidated in 1943 near Oslo, and then they were deported first by boat on the Donau and then by train to Auschwitz. Less than 2% of the Jewish population of Norway survived the war. Unfortunately, my mother's family did not. And of the nine children, the patriarch of the Nahtonsen family, that's my mother's family name, not whatever name he came up with, only four survived, and they came to the U.S. As I added a bit of irony here, and a bit of lunacy, too, I might add, Mr. Allen adds to the end of this, that somehow he's decided that my mother's family are related to some notorious Russian spies who were executed in the 1950s. I mean, I got to tell you, folks, that's your Vanguardian. That's your guy that comes here to be your city watchdog. I don't know how our level of discourse in this city has gotten to this point, but I will tell you, as someone that's been coming down here since the age of five, that five years ago, our local community wouldn't have tolerated this kind of nonsense. 10 years ago, they really wouldn't have accepted this kind of nonsense. And to just stand at the podium and spout off garbage and say, so-and-so is charged with this, he's accused of that. Well, so far, folks, I'm not accused of anything by anybody except Barry Allen, and I'm still waiting. Anyway, I thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor, your indulgence on that.
Thank you. I just want to briefly say with regard to Mr. Weisman's comments, Bonnie Nelson, Nelson Nygaard do a lot of good work. I am finding, I believe that there are some problems with their parking assumptions as it relates to the city of Glendale. And I stated, I think they may work fine and dandy in San Francisco or other Bay Area communities. I mean, you should find it ironic, Bill, that the ordinance that went through the TPC with regarding to the parking in Luffy's was cast asunder in our vote this afternoon. So I think we have a problem with how we deal with parking. Whichever policy we want to adopt as a council, as an agency, we better decide, are we going to set rules for parking, or are we going to just perpetuate the previous policy of setting a rule and then breaking it, setting a fee and then waiving it? Because it's, I want to say it's driving me crazy, but it really, it concerns me. Let's sit down, whether we bring in Nelson Nygaard, maybe a joint meeting with the TPC, our transportation experts, let's find out. We've got this cornucopia of parking spaces, we think. Our garages are continually underparked. Let's have a long-term plan where we can set a policy and hopefully stick to it and not deal on a, you know, a project-by-project basis, because I think, I think we need to plan better, plan more holistically rather than piecemeal. And that will be something that we'll do for another day, and we'll discuss how we could implement that as a proposal. I've been proposing that for a second, but let's, let's put that into a clear series of thoughts and issues, and I'll, I'll be happy to bring it to the council for some support for an official agenda placement. No other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn in the memory?
No, 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 no.
Oh, new business. Sorry, sorry. Mr. Weaver.
It gives me great pleasure to move that pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.1A5 and Charter Article V111, Section 1, Ann Mauer is hereby approved and promoted to the position of General Counsel Litigation for the City of Glendale. And further that a written copy of this motion be transcribed, certified, and delivered by the city clerk to the Office of the Civil Service Commission of the City of Glendale as and for the written statement required by Article 24, Section 5, Subsection 2 of the Charter for the suspension of competition for said office.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Van Caro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Aaron Najarian?
Aye. Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Mayor, I move that pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.1A5 and Article 8, Section 1, Doreen Margarosian is hereby approved and promoted to the position of Assistant City Attorney, Water and Power for the City of Glendale, and further that a written copy of this motion be transcribed, certified, and delivered by the city clerk to the Office of the Civil Service Commission of the City of Glendale as for, and, as and for, a written statement required by Article 24, Section 5, Subsection 2 of the City Charter for the suspension of competition for said office.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Van Caro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes. Now, with regard to-
Will we adjourn in the memory of-
Ivan Cole?
Aye.
Jane Friend?
Jane Friend. Jane Friend and Ivan Cole, there's a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, I may.
As a member? We are adjourned.
Thank you.